Six P M. Weird. Wow.
There we go.
And she speaks. We are going to get started. I guess I need to, with the early work session, I need to read this. Pursu- Angie? Okay. Pursuant to Governor Abbott's temporary suspension of various provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, and in an effort to protect the health and safety of the public, the public will not be allowed to attend the city council meeting in person. Members of the public may view the city council meeting live at no cost through the following internet link. W W W dot Highland Village dot org backslash H V T V. So, any person wishing to provide comments on any matter to be considered on this agenda may email such comments to the city secretary at A Miller at Highland Village dot org by one P M. On Tuesday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Let's see if we don't have, no, no emails. All right, so we are going to get started. We, today, tonight, we get to get an update on the police department operations from Chief Rhine. How are you feeling?
I'm feeling great. Thanks, Mayor. I, uh, Mark and I flipped coins to see who's going to have to do the presentation I lost. And I, the, the appearance tonight, I'm, I'm in a, it sort of worked out really well for the, the surgery because my duties are administrative and this week is a mandatory forty-hour class under Chief's legislation, which happened to be in Denton. So, I'm tied up in class this whole week, just came from there. It's sort of neat, but I do enjoy this opportunity every year to, to, to let you know how we're doing, how we did the last year. Answer questions and/or, you know, take suggestions to say, hey, you ever consider this or whatnot, too. It's a long presentation. Um, I'm going to jump through some of those things. I'll put, I'm not going to read through every slide. If you see something that you need addressed, you know the drill. Just yell at me and I'll, I'll knock it out for you. Let's see, do I have control of this? It's very strange during being left-handed, I can tell you that. It's, things are backwards. Chief Stewart, if you could hand out our department coin. So, mission statement, um, and I replaced Ed, you know, just about, just over, just over six years ago. I haven't changed the mission statement. Everything's the same. We didn't update our department coin, which I don't believe any of you have, so we're going to sort of make that a, a night to hand one of those out tonight. Three values that we do believe can be traced back to anything in policing with problems is treating everybody, you know, internally, externally, with, uh, respect and fairness. Excel in your, your profession is number two, and, uh, train up if you're not there. So, we try to very, very diligently live to, to those three things on the back of those coins. Another big part of this department, anything that we, we put in place, how we investigate complaints, how, uh, when we arrive on scene and/or if we receive any officer complaints, we look very thoroughly at these nine principles of policing which were established, you know, in eighteen twenty-nine by Sir Robert Peel. And we do have principles and philosophies in the police department. Principles are the, you know, just for a rundown of those, something in writing that has lasted the test of time um, and, and are understandable by everybody. And we believe in these things. Awards and recognitions for the last few years. Nothing new. You've seen most of these. We're recognized agency by the Texas Police Chiefs Association for three, three different times now. Our organizational chart, I know it's small, um, but basically, you know, I sit at the top. We have two divisions. We have field operations and, and support services. People are assigned underneath, underneath each one of those commanders, uh, respectively. Field operations primarily, if you want to understand that, are the uniformed officers who respond to complaints in the city. Support services, animal control, dispatch. The, our S, our school resource officers, more of the, again, the name implies support, support operations. And, uh, broken down a little better than looking at it, the chart. Out of thirty-three sworn, we have five for command staff, twenty-eight are assigned to the rest of the department. Of twelve civilians. Ten of them are, uh, full-timers, two of them are part-timers, and then the crossing guards. Not to, and not to forget or neglect our auxiliaries. There are non-paid civilians who live in our community, who give us a tremendous amount of support through various operations, um, during the course of the year. Couple of years back, we established with Mike, under Mike, some, and the previous fire chief, some staffing level requirements that we wanted to maintain our dispatch center with two as much as possible. So, we established peak times under dispatch. Our staffing, uh, levels for patrol, our, there's six assigned to each shift. And our minimum staffing level for patrol is three per shift with a goal of four. Some initiatives over the last.
Do we, is everybody, are we full? I mean, all these positions are filled and?
We're down two, two right now.
In dispatch?
Oh, dispatch is full.
Full, okay.
Torn officers, we're down two.
Okay.
So, when does a guy, if he's a rookie, when does he upgrade to riding in his own car? Because I've seen a couple of guys that are riding together. At what point in time does he get his own?
Depends on experience sometimes, but there's a formalized training program that lasts, can last up to five months. It could be almost five months. If we get somebody who has a little more experience, uh, we've seen it as low as three. So, dependent, they have to meet minimum requirements, documentation, earning that trust to be, to be able to make decisions on their own. That's a huge responsibility. Huge. Highlights on there, some newest things. Uh, Chief Stewart would, found some neat stuff this past year. We're able to listen to nine-one-one calls in our cars now. So, if you want to talk from an expediency, efficient, we don't have to wait for dispatch anymore for nine-one-one calls to, to wait for them to dispatch that call. We know, they know when it comes out and can listen in on the call. It's pretty cool.
Are you seeing, are you seeing, um, the results of that in terms of response time?
We've been in what, two, two months now live? About two months. Haven't really, you know, put all of that data together yet to see, but overwhelmingly, the officer's response, we were unsure, you know? Sometimes you don't know if it's going to go over well or not. One more thing to throw at them to listen and while, listen to the radio, but without a doubt, you can formulate a plan, uh, of a, a plan quicker. And, um, I'm a huge proponent to roll resources faster than not, okay? Meaning that we know the address, doesn't necessarily mean that you got to park your car in front of the house and run up in, inside, but at least it gets you moving in that direction. Instead of going the opposite direction, having to turn around and lose that time. So, it should decrease nine-one-one call, uh, response times over this next year. It should, in theory. Police cadet sponsorship, that started about two years ago, but we still, uh, in accordance with most of the agencies around here, it's, it's just the standard of doing business now. We have to send people to the academy and, and we have one in academy right now, actually. Uh, that's almost a six-month process before they even come back to us.
So, that's not their certification? That's just sending them to the academy?
Basic licensing requirements for the state. In addition to, uh, age requirements and things like that, you have to have the basic academy under your belt.
And where is that?
Uh, there's five different locations around here, but we primarily use T C C out of, uh, Fort Worth in Tarrant County. It seems to be close. Collin County has a pretty good program also. Lots dependent on seats available. Sometimes they're abundant and sometimes there's none. And we also take in consideration where our folks are coming from, um, where they live and, because they got to drive back and forth also.
And how long does it last?
Twenty-four weeks?
Twenty-four weeks?
Twenty-four weeks.
Wow.
Twenty-four weeks. Then they come to us, do their orientation and start their field training program for three to six months in that process also.
And then they can, they can fail, right? I mean, they, just because you get accepted into the police academy doesn't mean that you're going to graduate.
I can tell you from experience, uh, Texas, kids that pass those academies, if you pass, you earned it. It's a tough course. I mean, really tough. And they take, uh, initially, out of those twenty-four weeks, they probably take a dozen tests in order to get ready for their final, final exam. So, they test, they, they, they train, they test, they train, they test. The last thing at the end is the big state exam. And if you fail that state exam three times, you don't, you don't.
There's, there's physical requirements throughout that in twenty-four weeks, too.
Correct, correct. So, the basics, it's, it's, and they, the neatest thing, too, I think they get to interact with other departments and, and, and form that bond and understand the, the, uh, the course that they've chosen. Budget numbers, this is already in a previous packet that Ken put out probably eight times over the last year just to, just put it in here to, to keep a place card for it, for us. Police fleet, I know the mayor is outside during, a couple of times when people have asked us if we have, why we have so many cars. I can tell you during events in COVID especially, we didn't have enough almost in some instances. So, we do have two people assigned to all of our vehicles. Currently have one take-home car going home with an officer who spends a tremendous amount of time in the city trying to consider and move in in that direction, also with a couple of other officers who live in the city. We have four now, five actually, who live in the city. Command one's a commander, so that would not apply for him, him, but take-home cars have value. They're seen in the city, they're, they're used. There's a lot of rules behind those things. And again, if you heard my presentation in the past on vehicles, we spend fifty-six thousand dollars to outfit a vehicle when we buy them by the time they're done. We pay, we spent about twenty-seven, I think, for a vehicle, and the rest of it's all equipment. So, technology-wise, if you're putting, uh, that much into the vehicles, I've always said, if we can get a car to run for eight to ten years, we might as well, because by the time that eighth or tenth year comes around, the equipment in that car, the light bars, the cages, the video recorders, none of it fits in the next car. And technology-wise, it's outdated to begin with.
And what's a V I P car?
That is our for auxiliaries. So, we took a patrol vehicle, um, an older vehicle from our fleet to move it to that because of mileage is low and they don't put that many miles on the car. They don't beat them up either. They're pretty, really good with cars, so.
So, the Crown Victoria and the Taurus have gone off to the great beyond?
Long, gone to that boneyard.
All right.
I don't even know. I just saw a video on, on YouTube or something where somebody was sort of highlighting an agency that still had Crown Vics in place, which is amazing. But, uh, these vehicles have been great to date, and Scott could tell me otherwise, but, uh, we don't have any lemons, knock on wood. We haven't had any vehicles that have caused us any amount of pain. Uh, tires, oil, seats, and steering wheels. Those are the major headaches that we have to deal with. They just wear out. Technology, uh, body cameras have been a big thing in this department, which, you know, I'll stand behind, and I know all of you have in the past and understand the value behind them since two thousand nine, one of the first agencies in Denton County to ever get them. They'll never go away at this point in time. Other big piece of equipment on there is that LiveScan, a tremendous time saver. The amount of people, well, COVID now, we're not pushing so many people through the jail, but it's a, it's a nice piece of technology that can identify somebody if they've ever been fingerprinted ever before. We did upgrade our, our radar trailer this year.
Do we have the automated license plate readers on the?
We do.
We do?
Sometimes they, that's the oldest technology in our, in our department, actually, and, constantly trying to figure out the best way and solution to, to update it or replace it.
Does somebody really sit up in that tower?
If I told you that answer.
I bet somebody does.
We have, yes.
Yes.
It, it depends on the situation. It's a great observation platform for major events, but to use a body to sit up there twenty-four-sevens, not real feasible either, so.
Okay.
It's a hu, it still is a huge deterrent. It's no different than us parking. If you've ever seen, uh, our vehicles parked with no officers in them somewhere strategically, they're, they still make people slow down, so. Equipment, um, you know, in this new, in this chief's class, you know, as a leader of an organization, there are so many things imposed upon a police chief for responsibilities. All of you, including the mayor, have responsibilities that you expect, expectations of me. City manager has expectations of me. Citizens have expectations of that position, as do the, the officers in the police department. So, for the officers in the department, if you've ever been to one of my budget presentations, giving them the state of the best equipment that they can have, the most up-to-date that keeps them safe, that's one of my priorities also, one of those responsibilities. So, we're constantly looking to upgrade that equipment. Of which we addressed last year with the, with the, um, shotguns. Uh, we're probably not going to replace them this budget year. I'm just throwing that out there right now. We ran into a glitch with that company. Beretta was bought out, and instead of merely following through with that purchase and haphazardly hoping that everything works out in the future with them, we've taken a little step back here and, and are going to evaluate another company for sure or, or another manufacturer before we make that final decision. And I think I want to stress that to you, too. We just don't, uh, in the past, if you've been here, the, the time that Ed's been here or I've been here, I don't think we just run out and, and haphazardly spend our city's money. We evaluate a lot of options. We, we test a lot of things before we do those things because the goal is to make it to, to be good and last. And, uh, we've been very fortunate that way. We follow Texas Best Practices, well, we previously mentioned NiBRS, National Incident Base Reporting System through the FBI. That's where all those statistics are collected from all our criminal reports and compiled over the year. When people want to look up whether or not they want to move here, they check for usually two things, school districts and crime stats. Those are all done almost automatically through, uh, our CAD system, through I C S. And then we follow, um, the National Fire Protection Agency Association, excuse me, dispatching standards also. Is why we mention that. Oh, no, no, no! This is pretty good. For the last couple of years, you know, we've been monitoring these statistics, so we answer nine-one-one calls ninety-nine percent of the time, less, fifteen or less seconds.
This shows two thousand eighteen and nineteen and nineteen and twenty, and there's, obviously, there's an increase in the number of calls. Can you say, you know, because it obviously doesn't show prior years, is this a consistent, are we seeing an increase in calls year after year after year after year?
I would say that's true, but, I mean, we could verify that, but I, I mean, I've never seen a year. The only thing going down right now is, was our activity this year, meaning self-initiate activity by officers on the streets because of COVID.
Right.
But the calls for service still are going up. Nine-one-one calls still going up. A lot of that's medical stuff, as Mike can attest to. Medical calls are up this year, right? Obviously.
So, would you say the majority of your nine-one-one calls are medical-related or, or do you quantify that?
You know, I'm going to have a slide where that'll show the breakdown of our calls for service.
Okay, thank you.
We still are, are very, uh, very good with our E C A program. The goal was always to have a hundred percent certified at any given moment. That's darn near impossible with changeover. But out of the twenty-eight who are eligible for E C A certification, you can see those numbers where we have nineteen currently certified. Four, they're pending, um, through, one that just entered the, the process, and four who are sitting just waiting for the state approval. So, they finished everything. We're just waiting for the actual certification. So, that'll put us at twenty-three out of twenty-eight, which is pretty good.
What kind of services would they provide?
E C As?
Yeah.
Uh, base, B L S, if you want to use those term, basic life-saving support. They're, they're supposed to help the fire department get there as a community caretaker, uh, get in the door with a, a bag that basically, blood pressure, uh, they can stop bleeding, and they could administer oxygen if necessary. But our fire guys are so fast behind us that, uh, I think, I think it's probably fifty-fifty now who gets on scene first. I know you're going to.
We'll see in two weeks.
Okay, if they get there first. Uh, but they're certified to do those things and, uh, it's a level of confidence for them also and citizens. I think if you've ever sat through a, a fire, um, presentation, you know, you wonder why, if you wonder why the sirens are going most of the time, sirens relieve people if they know that the help's coming to save them. So, medical calls, you'll see our guys run lights and siren more often to, to those calls than anything else, as will the fire department, so it's a good backup. Um, I know fire department is, they have a few more obligations now with mutual aid and things also. Just better blankets our city.
We've had several success stories, John, I think, before, um, you got on council after they, we approved this, that the police officer got there and were able to start CPR and, and kind of be just a little bit ahead of the fire department, so. I think it's a good program. Are the guys still?
Yeah, 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 they're, they've fallen in line with it completely. The, um, it's not a haphazard program. The fire department, really, we fall under their guidelines with medical directors' guidelines. Our bags are regularly inspected. If a piece of equipment is removed from those bags or, you know, the bag is removed, a new bag is put in place. So, it's, 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 it's not just to throw the bags in the trunk of the, in the back of the police cars and drive around, uh, uh, haphazardly. It's, it's got a lot of value to it. This is how we break the city down into five districts. Further broken down to area responsibilities where each officer is assigned specifically an area to sort of monitor and be the focal point of contact if anything is happening in those, uh, those areas. Call types and priorities, this is more broken down, um, to what we respond to. There's another slide coming up that actually will tell you how many we responded to for major calls. Some response times. So, currently using I C S as our breakdown for our statistics on this. We're very, very close to having another program in place that, uh, actually is live dashboard on the city manager desktop, mine, Mark's, to actually compare data. And here's where you get into specific calls for service. Your sheets are going to be a little more clear than this one. And you were asking, Tom, you were asking specifically on medical calls.
Mm-hmm.
That is blurry as heck.
We can see it.
Oh, can you?
Yeah.
EMS fire-related?
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, EMS fire-related, would that be it?
Yes.
It'd be the largest.
Went down from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty for EMS fire-related calls.
For those, right.
Wow, look at the nine-one-one hangup.
Yeah.
I mean.
Cell phones, they're crazy. They, so many missed dials on cell phones. It is just, I don't, don't know why, but I, I've been a, I say victim, I didn't try to dial nine-one-one one time and sure as heck, my phone dialed it.
So, um, traffic slash parking related, and these are not officer-initiated versus motor vehicle crash related? What's the difference in those two?
Well, let's see.
Well, I bet traffic is, traffic and parking is parking and.
Well, Mark breaks these down a little further than, than.
It says not officer-initiated, so that would be, that would indicate to me that it's, it's not an officer sees somebody flying or they're radar, they're radar-ing and they get somebody. Is that an officer-initiated when they, they then pull them over?
Yes.
Okay, so, so this is not officer-initiated, so I'm just trying to, that's, obviously, somebody's, they're being dispatched to a traffic or parking incident?
Uh, we can actually, y, yeah, is it both or is it just calls for service, truly calls where people call us? So, these are all related to call-ins, call-in complaints.
Okay, so, so somebody thinks that somebody's speeding down their neighborhood or is driving drunk or something like that?
Correct.
That outnumbers, wow.
And people, people call us a lot.
And then the assaults, what I find interesting is the assaults and harassments and civil complaints and disputes have gone up dramatically from nineteen to twenty. I mean, even, it's only two percent, but that still looks like a pretty, pretty big number. But that could be, you know, COVID-related distress, the anticipation, anxious folks.
Are those commu, uh, computer harassment or online harassments? Or is that person, person-to-person harassment, phone calls?
These overall categories we lump together as much as we can, yes. Our primary offenses, broken down, next.
Ah, there you go.
What's a juvenile status offense?
Minor in possession.
Oh, so it's a juvenile doing something wrong?
With a few different, few different things. Ju- curfew, minor possession, runaway, um. Yeah, and these are the overall categories sort of dumped together instead of individual, otherwise we'd never, we'd be at point zero, zero, one on some of those categories. Arrests. Down, which is a good thing.
Is that because just bad things in general are down? Is it because COVID is?
A little bit of both, okay? COVID kept people out of the shopping areas a little bit and then.
Warrant service is down, too.
Warrant was down tremendously. We did not, traffic stops diminished over these last, uh, ten months tremendously. Let's see, citations on the next slide, yeah, everything dropped this past year.
Twenty twenty going to be the anomaly on all of this. I mean, we're going to look back after we have and go, oh, well, it was twenty twenty, so, you know?
Sure is going to be exactly the same.
Oh.
Or worse.
You think? No, it's not.
So, just a, just a quick question for me, educating. So, warning. So, if I'm speeding through a school zone, am I likely to get a ticket or a warning?
Sure. Depends.
Get a ticket if you're speeding through a school zone.
School zone, I mean, I, it'd be safe for me to say in a school zone, you're probably going to get a ticket, okay?
So, what constitutes a warning versus a ticket? That's where I'm going. I mean, what, is it just?
Really don't want to answer that in public, okay? There's always officer discretion.
Right.
But the moment I give you a number, then somebody it happens to says, wait a minute, the chief said. No, that's not really how I.
It's just based on their experience.
It is, you know, and conditions, eh, there's so many factors that can be taken into consideration for the officers. So, I say it depends. We do have an actual policy that I've cited for citizens. If they write in and, and, and say, why did I get a ticket in this particular instance? Da-da-da-da-da. And we have a, you know, that's a public record, so I can ask those things and, and I'll give it to them. But we have a, an actual policy that says, under these conditions, we try to do it this way. But, you know, if, if, as we've, I've stood up here in the past for the, the complaints in the, in the residential area for speeders. You know, what's your tolerance versus your neighbor's tolerance? You know, is ten a good number or is eight a good number? A school zone, is it four or is it eight? It, it all matters. We just, we try to use a, a really good exercise of judgment at the time. And you know, we're huge on the community policing activities, so I think about 30 different programs in the city where we keep track of different things that are specifically outlined in community policing programs. The city, uh, you know, with Ed and, and their hard, hardworking, uh, people here over the last few years i- is a model for other departments. They've come here numerous times to ask us about various programs and, and take them back to other communities. In fact, today, I mean, in the last two days, I've been asked by three different chiefs, you know, for different programs. We do provide the HPPD online crime app. You can always get that to find out what, what our hotspots are, what's going on. Animal care, Wes gave you a long presentation last year, it's just a highlight to say it's a big chunk of our business still. And, um, I hope to, we might have some progress and instead reestablishing some contractual issues with our current, uh, provider here. Uh, now that Paul's on board, we intend to meet probably in the next two weeks to start to continue those conversations with our, our current provider, who reached out to us, by the way, and, uh, was, was hopeful to continue some type of contractual negotiations or negotiations toward contractual, um, finality, uh, in the interim of all of the stuff that's going on.
You and I can take this offline, but I had another complaint in my neighborhood about the cats.
Great. Uh, we are, uh, speaking of that, we, we do, I think, have our almost final version ready for councils, well, after blessing with the city manager, but we've done the rewrites back and forth three different times now, so we're almost ready, probably next 30 days to give a presentation on that for the animal control ordinance. So, and it's huge.
So, back, going back a step, you were talking about the conversations with the current provider, does it, um, is that to say that they're reconsidering the decision to-
Yes.
Retire and boot us?
Uh, not retire, but to carry on business for a while longer.
Good, okay.
Yes. Whew.
That was good, chief.
Thorough.
Yeah.
Very.
Good stuff.
Do you have any questions? Oh, yes, Robert, absolutely.
Chief, what's the department policy on the use of the body cameras?
Well, uh, contact with any citizens, it comes on. It's, it's very, very harsh actually on the officer for failure to turn it on. It doesn't, eh, even if the equipment doesn't work, it's still on the officer to say you were responsible to turn it on. So, let me, you back up, we have in-car cameras and body cameras, so probably four or five years ago, I changed our policy that actually officers, if you're responding to a call for service, uh, uh, there was no tracking of body cameras or, or video cameras in the cars unless you turn on your red lights or you manu-, or you turn them on. So, we actually have a policy in place that says any dispatch call for service, you must turn on your in-car camera regardless if red lights and sirens are on. Why? Because I found in my experiences that typically people like to drive a little faster going to calls for service or maybe a little slower going to calls for service, or something happens in front of them that I wish we would have seen. So, we have that coverage going on right away. And before they initiate contact with citizens, they're supposed to have their body cameras turned on. Now, there are every once in a while those unique incidents where somebody runs up to you or you're out of your car, something happens, but they're supposed to get them turned on as fast as possible. And we've been really, uh, since, since, uh, Minnesota, really, really watching these videos like crazy and actually writing officers up if they're not. There hasn't been that many of them, I'm not saying in that case, but we've really been overseeing that process from a QA portion.
Thank you. Thank you for the coin. I collect these.
Oh, good. Again, well, I can't say enough for the support, uh, that we get from all of you and the citizens. You see all the, you know, the comments we get. I get complaints, yes, I do. I try to keep you out of loop. Sometimes you get them before I do, but you know, we work through them. Uh, nothing to hide. We, uh, you know, if you see something, I, you know, I'm hoping at a council meeting is not maybe sometimes the time to bring up the complaint, but anytime that you'd have anything to, that the citizen or, or you have to ask, send me an email, CC Paul, come see me, whatever the case is. I'd rather jump on it, uh, uh, faster than sooner, than later and have it develop into a, 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 an avalanche. But we try, and I think the mayor knows, I mean, my first couple of months here, we had a couple of things real fast and they were, they were big. But, uh, we're not, I, we're above board, folks, but it all, again, as I've said in the past, when things started breaking loose over the last summer, we're held accountable because of you. I mean, by you doing your jobs, okay, and caring as much as you do, you hold us to that high standard. Or, you know, it's just the way it works, so I say thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you and, and all of our law enforcement, police officers and dispatchers. You guys do a great job and we certainly don't want to do that, that job and that's why we trust you to do it. Can y'all do a good job?
Well, thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. Anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay.
No, good talk. Thank you.
Well, thanks, chief. Hope you get the feeling better. Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on to clarification of consent or action items listed on January 12th city council meeting agenda. So, I would like to, um, I, I'd like for, um, to get some clarification on 1516 and strings or anything, if everybody's okay, uh, move that to consent. If possible, you know, if, if we, if you want, so. 15, um, is the, consider the resolution 2021, 29, 26, establishing a designated mailing address, email addresses and website for receipt public information request. Angie, do you want to kind of tell everybody what, what has brought this?
So, basically, this establishes a specific designated mailing address, email address so that people can submit open record requests, public information requests to staff. This way, we can ensure that the, the requests are handled in a timely fashion. You know, we have 10 business days to fulfill the request. So, this way, if they come into the designated, uh, officer, we can start to work on those to get those processed quickly and timely. This just allows us-
So, before, we had an email address, but, but then they could come in other ways as well?
Technically, it had to be in writing and it could come to any staff member at all.
Gotcha.
And then it had to be forwarded on to us. This way, we can designate specific email addresses. This designates one for PD records and one for other city records.
And this was changed by the state?
Yes, it allows the governmental bodies to approve specific, um, designated email and mailing addresses. And you are ill, luck for our website.
Takes away faxed requests, correct?
Correct.
Good.
Yes.
What'd you say, takes away what?
Fax. You can't fax a request.
Right.
Oh, fa-, yes.
Yeah, before this, we could still accept them. We just don't get very many faxed requests anymore. It's rare.
And so, if that, that will be on the website?
Mm-hmm.
It'll be easy, easily found?
Yeah, this notice will be on the website, um, on my page, the city secretary page where it talks about public information requests.
Okay.
We've also just gone live with our Gov Q and A portal where people can, um, sign in and submit requests so that they can walk in, they can mail it to us, they can send it to the two email addresses depending on the top of record if it's a PD or city request and then the online portal.
Perfect. Sounds like it's simplifying it to me, so, okay. Thanks, Angie. And then on number 16, um, guys, um, and I don't know, Kevin or Paul can give a clarification on this, but it's, um-
It's Kevin.
Kevin, you want it? So, uh, it's Consider Ordinance 2021-1280, y'all can read this. Adopting non-substantive amendments to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 26, subdivision and site development regulations, Exhibit A subdivision ordinance relating to subsections ENF, section 2.7 replating to correct certain, and I love this word, how many of y'all use this on a, uh, in your, uh, daily, um-
I don't even know what that means.
Um, well, you're gonna find out in just a minute. Scrivener, um-
I knew somebody had it as a name.
So, um, Kevin, do you want to just clarify what that is all about?
Really, yeah. First of all, scrivener error is basically a drafting error. Is this, the scrivener is somebody who writes something, um, so that's-
I call that a scribbler error.
Well, well, the way I was probably drafting at the time that this was getting written, that's probably about what I was doing. Be honest with you. No, basically, um, Autumn, Aiman came into me, we were, had some questions about a replat we were working on and in the process of, of trying to answer her questions, realized that, um, you know, in drafting that section of the subdivision ordinance regulations that we reworked here about a year or so ago, if, if even that long, um, found out that just didn't quite get through those sections in doing the cross-referencing to proper sections as those other sections were being renumbered and, um, and just be honest with you, it was, it was my drafting error. I had cut and paste a provision and just didn't number, get through the numbering correctly as I should have. And so, uh, and by the way, you didn't get billed for this work. Just so you know. And so, anyway, this is to clean all that up and, uh, make sure that, because I think in cleaning up the cross-reference sections, answered all, pretty much all of her questions, um, you know, and so we can get, make sure it's done right.
Is there, if it's just a cleanup, why do we need two reads?
Because it's an ordinance. It's amending an or-, it's an ordinance amending an ordinance.
So, since it's, since we need a read, can you, can that be moved to consent agenda?
That's true. Since we have, can we move it to consent if we have that first and second read?
I don't know if we've ever done that before. Uh, we've not ever done that bef-, I mean, we don't traditionally do that.
Right.
I mean, I, if, if you're comfortable doing it, otherwise we can just present it and read it.
I mean, I was just, yeah, we can leave it, it's not, no, no big deal.
It's not taking longer.
The second read will be on consent.
Yeah.
The first read, we'll just leave there, but-
Right.
But, you know, if everybody's okay with moving 15 up to consent, we can do that.
I mean, honestly, reading, reading the agenda wording for that would be sufficient to constitute the reading. Uh, so, if, if you, since you're gonna read, if you read it under consent, you could, either way, it's, it's up to, again, it's up to y'all.
We're gonna leave it right where it is, uh, that one, and then, uh, that way we'll have one thing on action. If we choose to move 15 up then to consent, then we can, and that way, there's not, there's, everybody's okay.
That's all.
That means we don't have anything on the action.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll have 16 on action. And then late work session, we've got 15 minutes, we can talk about this, um, if everybody's okay with it. Are you okay with that, Paul?
You bet. Yeah, let's go ahead with that.
Go ahead and do late. So, um, discuss content, format and scheduling for a city council work planning session, so. Um, I think you have a, do you want me to tee this up? Don't you have a slide?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead? I think Laurie's trying to pull the slide up right now.
We, um, so we, you know, we all talked about, we need to have a, it's not a retreat because a retreat is fun. This is a work session. This is gonna be a workshop for council, um, five-year planning, the whole nine yards. At the same time, I had thought that we would try to, to work in the, um, Riley, you know, we'll do the personality assessment things and we're gonna try to work all that in. I had approached Paul and Ken and all of them and said, let's do that on one day where we do Riley in the morning and we have that welcome to find out, and when you see this, and Paul's gonna talk about this, these are just possible topics. This is not even you guys having an opportunity to say what you want, you know, to put on for a topic, so. They brought my feet back down to the ground and said, there is no way we can do all of this in one day. Um, so, I am, um, we're gonna talk about, the 27th is gonna be the day for, is everybody's okay with that, for the workshop? We will, uh, and we'll discuss times and all that. That's a Saturday.
27th, right?
February 27th. Before that, um, and I've, I've talked with Riley, um, not knowing how long all of that, for him to go over everything on the, the assessments and, and not knowing. We have some options. Um, we could do a, an evening here. Uh, we're not going someplace, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be right here. We're gonna do the workshop at, are we doing it here or 9:48? 9:48? Okay. Because we're gonna bring in all of the department heads and stuff, so, for the workshop. And then we can do an evening. I don't know what your schedules look like though. So, I had kind of thought we could do it Tuesday before council, but we would almost have to start it at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, you know, to be able, just in case we have a lot of questions and interaction and stuff with Riley. To be able to get started at 6 o'clock and then, or we don't do an early work session and we go into just regular council meeting. Or, we can pick another night. Or, we could do a Saturday. So, Paul, y'all be thinking about that, kind of what works with your schedules? If we were to do an afternoon-evening during the week, what would be the better day? What would be the time? What you think would be? Or do you want to do another Saturday?
How much time does Riley? Is that a four-hour session?
He said two, but with interaction and conversation, you know, it could go three or four.
Pre-work before the session?
I had thought that, but I, I, we, we can't do, we need, so the most important thing, even over assessments, is this workshop. These, these topics, five-year plan, all of that, we need to, we need to get through that, so we have to concentrate on that. I don't want to be rushed. I don't want to start this and then be looking at my watch going, oh my gosh, we got 2 o'clock, okay, we gotta, you know, and we're having to, we're having to rush through that.
I think they should be separate.
Okay.
This is fine for a full day on a Saturday. I'm great with that. I was just thinking on the other, because if, if Riley needs three hours, we do a dinner.
Right.
Okay. If Riley needs six hours, then that's a different story.
No, no, no.
That's all I was asking.
No, he, no, he said two with knowing us already. We're chatty Catholics, so he said maybe three or four hours. We don't, so then I, earlier today, I was talking, you know, maybe we flip it, maybe we do the workshop and then we have Riley come in in late in the afternoon and we do that. It's still, I don't want to be rushed. I, I don't, I don't want to be rushed through the works, the planning session, so. So, if you're good with a, a separate time, now we just have to know kind of, because, you know, y'all have real jobs and what, what would be a time?
Okay, so the 27th is on a Saturday, right?
27th on a Saturday and that's, that's when we're doing the work planning session.
February 27th.
February 27th.
Why wouldn't we, uh, uh, this is just me, I mean, I, I can't speak for everybody else and I know we have, several of us have little kids, but why don't we just carve out two Saturdays? I'm o-, I'm okay with that as, as, you know, as long as we're not talking about a Saturday like mid to late March, because-
No, 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 it's gonna be before the 27th. I think we need to do this and then, um, but Riley would prefer, it would be better for him if it was during the week. Now, he will do a Sa-, another Saturday.
So, what about maybe a Friday, maybe Friday the 26th? Since John mentioned dinner.
Yeah, that came up, of doing a Friday night and then, and doing a Saturday.
That's not a bad idea.
I'm like, I don't want to spend that much time with y'all. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. That's, you know, and, and that's, that's a possibility. That, that's a possibility.
Essentially two months away from us.
And it has been. I've just been so sad. Um, okay, so, let's be thinking about that. Really, Robert, you're, you and Mike are the ones that, and, and Tom and Dan, I mean, y'all are the ones that we need the input from, what would be best for y'all, if it's an evening or if it's a, a Saturday, what, whatever's best for y'all. So, be thinking about that. Okay, Paul, you want to, you want to go over the possible topics and-
Mayor, I will thank you, but in the, these are some of the topics that the mayor and I discussed and, uh, Ken and I and Angie have discussed as well. And, and these may evolve as, as we're doing our work into something else. We do want to make sure there's any comments or, or topics the council wants to include. We want to make sure we do that as well. But, but up there on the screen right now, future bond projects, we would like to talk about that. I, I think we'd probably give an update on our current projects as well. Phil wants to go over the update of the parks master plan and the trail master plan, which could affect, of course, our future general fund budget. Would like to talk about the copper branch park master plan that has been completed. And then, uh, I know before I, before Mike left, we did talk about, uh, discussions you all have had in the past about updating the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance update, really to kind of fit with where the city is now, is, is maturing, uh, to make sure that we're covering that appropriately. And then also our code of ordinances, doing an update on that.
And then also, our code of ordinances is doing an update on that. So, those are the topics we have. If you have any others, we would love for you to be able to get with, get that to Angie, hopefully this week, so we can start working on that.
Which one is gonna take the most time?
Code of ordinances?
You know, a lot, a lot of those may be more directional from you guys. I, I think the future bond projects, that one could take some time. And, and even the, the park master plan and trail master plan, and how we might approach that could take a little bit of time.
And the, the code of ordinance update, just how we're going to approach that and, and what would be the best way to, to handle that, if that's something that's, that we need to be, to be looking at.
That hadn't been updated in years, has it?
No, it's 100 years old.
Didn't Mike say something about that's really, when you, we start really getting into it, that's like a two-year process?
It's a lo, it's a long time.
I believe the proposal that, that you and Mike had gotten was a three-year process.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna look at some other approaches as well. Certainly is not something you do in a year. It is gonna take some time.
Right.
The, the one good thing is the, the section with, with regard to animal control, that is being done right now. That's, that is a big one, but the others do need to be addressed as well.
So, if y'all have anything that you want to discuss, if y'all could email Angie so that they can get with all the department heads and, and be prepared. They wanna, they, they're gonna, all of them are gonna be there, they're gonna get, you know, give us updates and whatever, you know, slide, whatever they need to do. But, if there's something that you would like to be put on this list, please let Angie know so that they can be made aware of that and start working on that as well.
The one thing about the date on the 20th that has been moved, that thing was in conflict, it just got canceled.
I heard, I know. My, my trip to Vegas got canceled because of work session. That's okay. I wouldn't go to Vegas anyway because of COVID, so. But, yeah, so we could do something on the 20th.
Yes.
But, so what do you, I mean, we don't have a lot of, well, we do have a few more minutes. We can just talk, does anybody, is everybody okay breaking it out to two days, to two separate days? Okay? And then, because we don't need the department heads for the assessment. We, they, we, they don't need to be here for that. So, we'll concentrate on the 27th, if y'all are good with that, for this. What would your, what's your suggestion on, so somebody suggested a Friday night, the Friday before?
This Friday night, does doing that on Friday night, does that involve having to have any, any staff staying late because of us?
Well, no, Paul and Angie will be, they'll be, they'll be here. But they're gonna be here no matter whatever day we do it.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm, well, the reason I ask is, I mean, it's a Fri, if we were doing that, it'd be a, my idea on the 26th, that's a, that's a Friday night. And I kinda have some heartburn over keeping staff people here on a Friday night when they don't really, when they ordinarily wouldn't be.
I mean, I just, yeah. Friday night would not be my pick, especially if I'm gonna be gone on Saturday. Friday night would not be my, would not be my pick.
Okay.
And I don't know, how about y'all? I mean, who's got kids? John, you have, Robert, you have?
Riley gonna need time between Friday and Saturday to?
Riley won't be here on Saturday.
No, okay, but to give us the results for Saturday? I mean...
So, what's gonna happen is?
Isn't the purpose of the personality test to?
To know the personalities?
To drive the conversations for the workshop and other things?
Well, that's, yes, but...
So, I guess my point is, if we do the Friday, we may not get the feedback we're looking for, the day before the, the workshop, right? So, if I'm told by Riley to be outgoing and, you know, conversational, I wanna know that before the workshop, not weeks after the workshop. So, I would be hesitant to back it up.
Gotcha.
Two days in a row.
Okay. And he will send out the test, whatever it is, like around the 1st of February, I think. We'll have it in plenty of time for him to, to do all of that, but...
Why not do it on Saturday, the 20th? If that's, if there's no conflict there.
So, with a Saturday, would he, he would prefer an evening or a weekday, Riley would? But if, if a Saturday's better for you guys, then we'll go a Saturday. I mean, are you?
I'm okay with a Saturday evening in February, there's nothing going on.
A Saturday evening?
Well, if he, if he's wanting evening.
No, no, he's wanting weekday evening.
Oh, okay, okay.
And you guys don't have to worry about me. I'm, I'm totally flexible, so.
What'd you say, John?
No, let's just move it, you know, Monday through Thursday evening, before that.
What about you, Robert? How does that work for you?
Tuesdays and Thurs, or excuse me, Mondays and Thursdays are better. Tuesdays, Wednesdays get tough with activities, sports.
Okay.
But, I can make anything work.
But we, so what would be the best time to start? I mean, if we...
You give me a month notice, I can make anything work, so, that's fine. Don't...
What do you think, John? What would be the best time? You're good with?
Kids go home at 5:30.
You tell me what time to be here and I will.
So, Mayor, you make the decision and just tell us what's...
Well, okay, here's, here's, here's...
It's always easy for me, because we don't have anything, we don't have sports going on.
Here's the question, though, that I wanna get back to that Robert asked. Are we wanting him to give us the assessment and then have that information before our meeting on the 27th?
Yes.
Okay. So, how long is it gonna take him to put together the assessment?
Well, he's gonna get the test from us after, on February 1st. He's gonna send it to us, and we're gonna fill it out. He's gonna assemble all of it and then come back and present it to us on whatever day that we, we choose.
Okay.
That's how that's gonna work.
I like the idea of a Thursday night.
Yeah, Thursday, the 18th, make a motion.
We don't need a motion. It's not on the agenda. Okay, so, Angie, did you get that date and, and start at, and we can, I mean, we're gonna do it here, okay? So, we'll have to bring, bring in dinner. And if we get, if we started it at 4:00 or 5:00, then we can all go to dinner together afterwards and celebrate our personalities.
What day is that? I'm sorry, 18th?
The 18th?
18th is a Thursday.
Hang on, let me look, though, hang on.
Yeah, council's the 9th and the 23rd.
So, 18th is a Monday. Oh, I'm January, never mind. Martin Luther King Day. Okay. So, the 18th, and then a second choice would be, just in case he's booked on the 18th. So, let's do the 18th at...
That's a Thursday, 18th is the Thursday, right?
Thursday, at 5:00.
So, is it, is the, which is the preceding Monday, is that the 14th or the 15th?
15th. Are the kids out of school that weekend, that week? Or not that week, but?
I don't think so, no. I think they get, I think they get MLK, but not President's Day.
Okay. Every third and Monday?
Yeah.
So, what about the 25th? On a Thursday, that's another, the next Thursday, it's...
I like the 25th better than the...
The 18th?
Myself, but...
So, you want the 25th, and if not, the 18th?
Yeah, I mean, well, yes. I'd prefer the 25th over the 18th.
And is there, I mean, is there wine? I mean, you wanna tell us wine? You don't have to, but...
I have a capital committee meeting on the 18th.
Okay, perfect. No, I mean, I didn't know if it's like every...
Could cause me to be late, so I, I don't know yet, so...
Perfect. Nope, you're fine. So, go with the 25th, Thursday, the 25th.
And what time did we say? 5?
5.
5 is better.
5, 6, 7, 8?
5 is fine.
Yeah, I mean, if it takes three hours, four hours, then, okay. And then, the second? For dinner. What'd you, for dinner, here, right?
You do want dinner?
Yes. If I'm gonna be here at 5:00, um, yeah. Oh, well... So, if we met at 4?
4 is tough for me right now.
Okay. 5:00 on the 25th, and if the, that's not, if it's not that date, then Monday, the 22nd. Is that good, people? Doesn't matter, y'all told me to make up my mind. 25th, huh? Oh, sorry. Okay.
I already scribbled it out, dag gummit.
So, that would be their second choice. 5:00, either one of those days. Phew, okay. Does anyone need a break before we go straight into the council meeting? Perfect. Well, we are gonna, then we're gonna move, so it's 7:00, and we start at 7, so...
Plow through this.
Do what?
We're gonna plow through this.
We are gonna plow through this. We are, okay. Uh, let me see. Y'all ready? Okay. All right. Okay, we are adjourned from the early work session at 7:01, and good evening. Welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is January 12th, 2021, and it is now 7:00 PM, 7:01 PM. And let the record show, all the council members are present. So, tonight, on our first meeting of the year, I get to lead us in prayer, and then I will also lead us in our pledges. So, pray with me, please. Lord, we come before you tonight just thanking you for our many blessings. We thank you for your promise that you make all things new again, and we start 2021 standing on that promise, a new year and new beginnings. Lord, I pray for our nation. I pray for our elected officials. I pray for your wisdom and guidance more than ever before. I pray our nation's leaders will seek you first above all else, and I pray they throw out party politics and come together for what's best for our nation. I pray we remember the words to our pledge of allegiance and write them on our hearts. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father, I pray for our first responders and our military, both here and on foreign soil. Keep them safe and give peace to their families. Bless them and bring them home to their loved ones safely. Father, I pray for all those dealing with this terrible virus, those that have lost loved ones and those that are hospitalized. Wrap your healing arms around them and give them hope. I pray for the medical professionals that are working tirelessly. Give them the strength to continue until the day that it is under control. No matter what 2021 holds, Father, I know that you are with us, still on your throne, and you are in control. I thank you, Lord, for loving us, and I thank you for forgiving us, in your son's precious name. Amen. Now, if you'll please stand, we will say the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag...
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor Texas's flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and individual.
So, Mr. Thomas, Angie, you said we didn't, we had none, okay? So, we're gonna move on to city manager and staff reports. I think we have an update from Chief Thompson on COVID-19.
Well, Mayor and Council, here we are again. What are we, almost 11 months into this now? We've had quite a few of these recently and, over the meetings, and unfortunately, the numbers are going up. If you look at the first slide there, I've talked a lot about context at the previous presentations and previous updates, looking at the number of cases, number of deaths versus population. I'm gonna change that context a little bit now, because what's concerning to me is the, how fast the numbers are going up now. So, I wanted to show you a two-month comparison of the numbers, and as you can see, in two, it took us eight months to get the first column as of November 10th, 2020. It's taken us two months to get to where we're at now, where most of the numbers have doubled, quadrupled, and even, you know, double, triple, and even quadrupled from what they were two months ago. So, it's, it's really important, it's on us that we work very diligently to make sure that we're maintaining all of the CDC recommendations, as well as when it's your turn to get the vaccination. So, there was a couple of questions, Councilman Jaworski asked questions of Paul, and the answer is basically, the number of deaths is increased is directly attributed to the number of cases increase. Now, that being said, the case fatality rate, so the ca, the fatalities based off the number of confirmed cases is actually dropping still, because the, the deaths are not keeping pace with the new cases. Yes, sir?
Along that line. So, we're testing more, so we're finding more. So, of the 742, many of those would be asymptomatic, people just went in to get tested?
Well, that's the 742 that we know of. There's, we're, they're in the rear still at the county, the county trying to give us the numbers, so we're...
But I mean, that's not, what I'm saying is, 742, those aren't people symptomatic.
No, the 742 is the total number of cases that we know about, whether it's been tested, symptomatic, asymptomatic, if they've been tested, confirmed by, by a test. They've been tested positive. We don't know the asymptomatic number.
Well, that's just what I was wondering, because I mean, the more testing you do, you're gonna find more.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's definitely, testing definitely has, plays into it. The testing availability is really, is finally increased at this point, where they're readily available. The, the quick test is becoming much more reliable of an indicator if you have it or not, whereas early on, it had a lot of false positives.
And can, just for clarification, one of the que, the question that you were referring to that I asked was, in some of our recent updates, we've seen a dramatic increase, you know, I think one day there were like eight or nine or 11 people that had died in that reporting, that 24-hour reporting period. So, the question I asked was, has the mortality rate changed? And, and is this, and are we seeing the mortality rate, is it, is it still within the same, are we seeing the predominant number of cases in the same age demographic? I think is what I asked.
Yes, we're seeing, and I have got the, the data here, yes, the, the, the over 40, 40 to 80-plus is the age demographic that we've had fatalities in Denton County. The, of course, 80-plus is vast, outpacing everybody else. The 70 to 79 is just behind that, 60 to 69 is behind that, so on and so forth. The, the, on 1110, the, the fatality rate, so that, again, looking at the number of cases versus the number of deaths, confirmed cases, that is, was 15.83% for 80-plus, and today it's 8%. Still a very high number for that age group. But the problem is, the number of cases has increased, confirmed cases that have been tested positive. There's only 341 cases two months ago. There's 1,125 cases today. So, even on the, the, the more at-risk population, they're still seeing the, a double, triple increase in cases, even, even those lower number than, of course, the 20 to 29-year-old age group or the 0 to 19 age group, where the numbers are really going up fast. As far as the, you know, there's been no fatalities in Denton County under 40. The, the current case fatality rate for the US is 1.7%. Again, that's based off confirmed cases versus deaths, and it's 1.7% for Texas. In Denton County, the case fatality rate has dropped, when you're looking at all the age groups, that is, not just the, the ones that, at highest risk. It has dropped from 0.76% to 0.54% in the last two months. Now, the mortality rate refers to the number of deaths based off a certain population demographic, and that can be total population, that can be based off of what the, who's been admitted to the hospital population. So, fatality, case fatality rate is based off the known confirmed cases and deaths, and mortality rate is a little bit more of a statistical analysis, and it can be, it can vary. If you wanna look at the case mortality rate, if you look at the, the 80-plus population versus the number of, the, the deaths in Denton County, it's 0.52% mortality rate. Now, if you look, if you're looking at it based off the population, the population doesn't change, so the mortality rate actually can increase, because your number of, number of deaths is increasing, but your population is not increasing at the same number, where the case fatality rate will decrease, because the number of new cases, confirmed new cases, is outpacing the number of deaths. So, that's why you've got the difference in the statistical analysis there. So, but to ta, the, the, the case fatality rate is dropping across all age groups, because the, the deaths are not keeping pace with the, with the new number of new cases.[1743.91] So we went from 54 deaths, 80-plus back two months ago, and we're at 90 deaths today, two months later. So it's not keeping pace, but we've gone from 341 total confirmed cases to 1,125 cases. So that's why the case fatality rate is continuing to drop, although the numbers are still going up, and the fatalities are still going up because they're gonna, they're still gonna continue as the cases are coming up, so. If you look at the hospital capacity right now, of course, the governor's threshold from GA 32 is 15%. Denton County is currently sitting at 25.2%. 73.9% of the total beds in the hospitals are occupied, and 34.3% of those beds are occupied by COVID patients. 96.6% of ICU beds are occupied currently in Denton County, with 44.9% of the ICU beds being occupied by COVID patients. In DFW, if you remember the trauma service area E, which is our area, which is the 19-county region that surrounds DFW Metroplex, we're at 25.72%. In Texas as a whole, if you take all the trauma service areas, we're at 21.68% capacity. So basically, the entire state is over the 15% capacity. Some good news, the vaccinations have started arriving. Very proud that we were able to run a vaccination clinic last week. We were able to vaccinate 115 people over a two-day period, which includes over 50% of the city staff. So 77 members of staff who are 1A and 1B met the criteria were vaccinated. We also were able to, and that includes 16 to 22 of the fire department, 35 staff from local doctors' offices that met the 1A criteria, we were able to help get them vaccinated as well. We helped one firefighter paramedic from Lake City's Fire Department. And it really was a team effort, and I want to specifically call out some people in the city that helped us, that it's not just the fire department, although it was held in our house. You know, Parks and Rec, I want to thank Phil and his team, Adam Richter, Chris Powell, and Hector Calderon for clearing out a bunch of shrubs so we could allow a clean flow through the clinic. PD Chief Stewart, Lieutenant Doyle, Corporal Harney and Boudreau, and Officers Andrews for helping to coordinate the PD staff, as well as provide a PD presence and security at the clinic. Because as you can imagine, the vaccine is pretty hot commodity right now. IT Van Tinch helped us get our computers in place so we could do the data entry at real time. Jana and Kim for their help getting, coordinating city staff and also getting a phone tree set up because, as you can imagine, the fire department was inundated with phone calls when they found out we had the vaccine. We filled it over 600 calls in a day, and we don't normally get maybe 15 or 20 calls in a day. As well as Communications, Lori and Andrew Boyd for helping put on the informational session for the city staff to inform them and give them some factual information about the vaccine. And like Chief Noakes in the Fire Department, he took the lead. He's been our, basically got us our provider approval, and he took the lead running the clinic. Chief Collier for going out to all the city doctor's offices and making contact with them in person to try to get, help them out. Charlene Seidel, our administrative coordinator for all the work she did in developing all the Google Docs and QR codes and everything. So I think overall, it was a real success. We're looking forward to doing more clinics once we get more vaccine. Finally, kind of in the weeks and months ahead, what we need to look forward to is, again, we will run future clinics as the vaccine becomes available. The state has moved to a vaccination hub model, which is, probably should have been done at the beginning, but they've chosen to do that now. Denton County is now, Denton County Public Health is gonna be considered a hub. They're receiving 3,500 doses of vaccine this week. 500 doses came today, and 3,000 should be here on Thursday. If you, if you feel comfortable, I've told all the city staff, I said, you need to do the research on your own and get the, look at the factual information, but if you feel comfortable, get the vaccine, as well as limit group gatherings, and of course, follow all the CDC guidelines we've been talking about for the last 11 months. Because we really need to curb the, tamp down on the virus a little bit and curb those numbers because we don't need the numbers to continue to increase. If you imagine those numbers two months from now, what that could look like if it kept the same pace. It could be, it could get very difficult for the hospitals, as well as everybody else in the process, so. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes, sir.
Chief, can you explain what the hub model is and how it's different than what it was previously?
Yes, so the hub model, they're gonna focus on providing a large quantity of vaccines to a central location, and it's primarily counties are gonna be the hubs, the public health departments. So, for instance, there's, there's over 120,000 vaccine allocation going up to these hubs this week to try to get the allocation out. Initially, they were going with smaller providers like us. We, there's no way that we can do 13,000 or 14,000 vaccines in the fire department. We just don't have the resources to do that. However, they've decided with the hub model and having a central location where people can register, because that's one of the big issues, is people trying to register and get the 1B population has been released. Just for context, there's 1.5 million 1A people in the state of Texas. There's 9 million 1B people in the state of Texas. There's been about 860,000 people have been, have received at least the first shot, and there's 1.5 million vaccines have been allocated out to the different providers. So there's a long way to go to get everybody vaccinated. And the hub model, they feel it's gonna work better having a centralized location within the counties to provide those vaccines and people to register to get the vaccines.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Council?
So looking long-term, you know, talking about a vaccine now to try to, to try to get us through this storm, as, are there any discussions about it? Is this gonna be something that every year, you're gonna have to get a vaccine? Is it gonna be like the flu shot going forward?
Right now, we just don't know. I mean, that's just the honest answer. The data is, the disease is still very new. The vaccine is still very new. It's only been out, we've got about three months' worth of data on the vaccine. There's discussions now with them going from a two-vaccine model to going to a one-vaccine model and skipping the second dose because they've, they had a small study during the main study, the trials, where they found that there was about 75 to 80% efficacy with the first shot. They get 95% with the second shot. So there's some, going to what Paul mentioned earlier, like a triage-type model to just to try to get as much vaccine out as possible instead of doing the second shot. But the, as far as how long the vaccine will last in our systems, there's a vast amount of information out there. We know for sure it's three months. Just like we know for sure if you get COVID, you, for three months, you will have antibodies. After three months, those antibodies will start to go away, and you'll be less immune to it over time.
I had another question that popped in my head. It's gone.
That's a symptom of COVID.
Yeah.
Of what, old age?
Were you able to taste your dinner tonight?
Yes, I was.
So you're saying three months, if you get COVID, after three months, the antibodies start dropping off?
That's, that's what the data shows right now, yes.
Oh, I know what the question was. There are two different versions of the vaccine, the Moderna and the Pfizer, is that right? Or is there a third?
Currently, there's two vaccines that have been, had the emergency approvals, Pfizer and Moderna's and second one. They're both mRNA, and they're both two-shot vaccines.
How are, how are they determining, like, are they, are they splitting those? Like, for example, Denton County, are we getting some of both? Or is it predominantly, we're getting one or the other?
When you sign up as a provider, you had to tell them what your refrigeration capacity was because the Pfizer's a very, it's a super cold, minus 72 degrees Celsius. They're only sending the Pfizer vaccine right now to places that have the capacity to have the deep freeze, where it can last for six months. If they were to ship it to us, for instance, we'd have a maximum of 15 days. And when we pulled it out of the box, we'd have basically 120 hours before 925 doses would be ruined, so.
Okay, okay.
And there's the Johnson &amp; Johnson, the single-dose one is supposed to be getting approved sometime in February. And I know there's gonna be, AstraZeneca's got one, there's two or three other ones that are coming, coming along the lines pretty quick, so. But right, right now, the main problem is there's just not enough being made.
Is that just like the flu shot, though, as well? All of these different manufacturers make the flu shot, and you just don't know that, what you're getting?
Yeah, I'm not sure which manufacturer makes the flu shot, makes the serum up for the vaccine.
So these people, these companies just jumped on and.
These are big pharmaceutical companies that make all kinds of stuff, so.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? And we don't know when we're gonna get any more?
No, ma'am, we're not. We know, the only thing we know for sure is we're gonna have 100 more doses come to us for the second shot for the people that we were first able to vaccinate. We don't have any, we're not on any list that I've seen today, so.
So somebody gets the first shot, how do they know that they're gonna, that there's gonna be a dose back for them to get a second?
Well, there's, there's two options. There's a V-Safe app, which is the CDC's, basically, they're checking your symptoms and how you, how you react to the vaccine. It'll send you a reminder, and then we have a spreadsheet that we'll be reaching out via email and then phoning everybody to schedule everybody back in.
When you get the first shot, are you any more susceptible to the virus after getting the first shot, before the second, than you were if you hadn't gotten it all?
Well, the new, the new data they're coming up, they're talking about doing a single shot. They say after two weeks after your shot, you have up to 80% efficacy. So you're 80% protected against the virus after the first shot. It's 95% after the second shot, and it's two weeks after your first shot when you have reached full immunity.
Okay.
Okay. We have beat the COVID.
Thank you.
Worse to death, so. Okay, so now we have the HVTV update.
I'm Timmy Grogan, and welcome to HVTV News.
Want a free name picket at Kids Castle? Send your Kids Castle adventure pictures to hashtag OurCastle2021. We will be selecting three random winners at the end of January, so get out there and have some fun. Just remember, post your pictures with hashtag OurCastle2021.
New and now open in Highland Village.
Hi, everybody. I'm Paul Hanayola, or as some people call me Dr. A. My wife and I have opened this wonderful establishment called Be Legend Gaming, and we want to invite you to come check it out. There are three things you need to know to have fun at Be Legend. And one is eat, second is drink, and the third is play. When I say eat, we have food, burgers, wings, pizza, paninis, the whole works. When I say drink, we have cocktails, we have beer, we have mocktails. We have all sorts of drinks for you to come enjoy. And when I say play, we have virtual reality, they're called the Omni Arena. It's the only one in all of DFW. We have Xbox, PlayStation, we have console gaming, we have PC gaming, the whole works. Come check us out here at the district at Highland Village, Be Legend Gaming. We can't wait to host you. Come check us out.
Now cut that ribbon. Make this the year you stay in the know. Sign up to receive news and information by selecting Stay Notified at HighlandVillage.org.
That's all I've got for HVTV News. I'm Timmy Grogan. Stay well.
Did you, Paul, you have anything else?
No, ma'am, I just would like to add about the giveaway for the, for the pickets. Of course, that is still going on. You can buy the pickets. And if you saw those arrows, you saw how great that looks. And when we were all out there working that one day, it was dirt, bare dirt, now it's the nice grass. I drove by there today. The parking lot was still full today. People are really enjoying Kids Castle, so it is certainly a great attribute to the community.
Council, have you, anybody been out there and been on the zip line? Me too.
My kids have been in the line, my kids have been in the line for the zip line.
I pushed the kids down and told them to get out of the way. I was gonna do it, so. No, it's so fun, and the park is, is amazing, so I think everybody's happy about that. And then a couple of us, three of us went to the Be Legends grand opening. And all you gamers, yeah, would be, y'all, you would love it, so.
Get your zombie slaughtering fix.
The virtual reality was, was interesting. Let's just, so we're gonna move on.
Amen.
Mayor and Council reports items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415. City Council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations, or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, information about community events and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Council, does anybody have anything? Yes.
I think if you're on the social media over the weekend, there was a bone marrow drive held on Saturday. We have a 12-year-old student at McCullough Middle School needs a bone marrow transplant. And we're familiar with it because their daughters had two of them. And trying to find a match is a challenge, and her siblings were not a match. So a drive was held by a number of her local mothers, and a lot of the students came out. So the end result of the drive was over 334 people came in that day and made a swab donation. There were 74 donations that were done by mail and sent in, so over 400. And according to Be the Match, that's one of the best days they've ever seen as far as pulling up donors. Also, to give a shout out to Southern Drawl Barbecue, they came on site, brought their food truck, and donated some of the profits of that day to Be the Match. So it's just a good showing from Highland Village residents, Highland Village cares. And a final one, that if you want to text Audrey, A-U-D-R-E-Y, 61474, to sign up to figure out how to be a match. So again, I would just shout out to the volunteers and to the citizens for doing that.
I will tell you that they don't want old people like me.
No.
I didn't fall in the, I didn't fall in the age range, so. But some of, Council would.
You have to be under what age? 44?
Under 44.
Not me.
18 to 44. Oh, no, but Robert would, I think. Okay, so I have, I have actually three things. Let me just make sure I have everything. So we are going to swear in a couple of our new firefighters. Let me get up here. I will, Chief, if you want to tell Dalton King, if he wants to come in, and his family. Y'all can come in. Don't be scared. Come on in. We don't bite. Okay, so I'm gonna put that right there. You stay over there, and I'll stay over here. You pull your mask down, and I'll, so we can see your face. Dalton, I will do you first, but I'm gonna, and I just noticed that our department has changed their wording for their, I'm gonna hand this to you so that you can just hold it while I, because I have big print. So I get the opportunity to swear you in, and this is one of the highlights of this job as the mayor, to do this, because we want to welcome you to the family. We are a family here, and I know it's a brotherhood, but Highland Village is a family. So I get the pleasure of doing this. So if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, and I'll go slow, okay? I couldn't do this. I state your name.
I'm Christopher Dalton King.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as a firefighter EMT for the city of Highland Village state of Texas and will to the best of my skills and abilities preserve protect and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States of this state and the charter and ordinances of this city I furthermore recognize my fundamental duty is to safeguard and to preserve life health and property against fire and other perils to assure that emergency medicine and rescue are delivered to all who call and to maintain a proficiency in the art and science of fire and emergency services. Congratulations. Welcome to the, welcome to the family. You have your family? You wanna take pictures, Chief? Yeah, I am, I mean, you want mask on, mask off, family wants to come up? If they're okay with that? And if they want to do it, I'll step out of the way. Oh, wow, I'll hold a baby. And y'all, y'all do what you want to do. Aww. Oh, yeah, move, yeah. Thank y'all for coming out.
How old?
How many weeks? Oh, I do need to hold a baby. Oh, my goodness. Okay, well, let me get out of the way, and y'all take.
Congrats.
Great pictures. Look at Lori back there. She's got the camera. Ah, oh, my goodness. He has his. This is the next one, yeah. You, yeah, I'll give you opportunity, if you want to say something while I hold the baby.
I just appreciate everything the city's given me, the time that I've been here so far, and I love every bit of it.
Well, welcome to the family, like I said. You're welcome. Thank y'all. Does the next family have a baby? Because if not, I don't want to do it.
We get a twofer.
Next, huh? So now we have Hugo. I'm gonna give you this, because I get the big, I get the big one, big, righty. Hugo, I just make sure I'm giving you the right one. And I'm all hung up. Okay. Let's pull our mask down, so I can see that you're actually saying this. All right. Chief, I'm not real, I'm not real crazy about this wording. It's hard to break it up, so. Oh, you're gonna let all the guys come in? Oh, you're going to let all the guys come in? Well, let's let them get in, so. Is this your shift?
No.
No, oh, okay, all right.
It was.
It was. And you got smart, and you raised your right hand. All right, repeat after me. I state your name.
I'm Hugo Longwood.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a firefighter EMT.
As a firefighter EMT.
For the city of Highland Village.
For the city of Highland Village.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my skills and abilities.
And will to the best of my skills and abilities.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And the charter.
And charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of this city.
Of this city.
I furthermore.
I furthermore.
Recognize my fundamental duty.
Recognize my fundamental duty.
Is to safeguard.
And to safeguard.
And to preserve life.
And to preserve life.
Health.
Health.
And property against fire.
And property against fire. And property against fire.
And other perils.
And other perils.
To assure that emergency medicine.
To ensure that emergency medicine.
And rescue.
And rescue.
Are delivered to all who call.
Are delivered to all who call.
And to maintain.
And to maintain.
A proficiency.
A proficiency.
In the art and science.
And art and science.
Of fire and emergency services.
Fire and emergency services.
Congratulations and welcome to the family. So I will give you an opportunity, if you want to say something, you can, or Chief, if you want, you go right.
Thank the city and Chief for giving me this opportunity to be part of the city's department. Hope to be here for the rest of my career.
Well, I hope so, too. Thank you. Do you want, you want pictures? Come over here, and I'll, we'll take a picture. Do we need our mask? This is going to show that.
No, don't put those on.
You were hired in a pandemic.
Just don't breathe.
Just don't breathe?
Just don't breathe.
Ready? We'll do one with a mask, and then we'll do one, we'll pull it down. All right. Okay, pull the mask down real fast, don't breathe on me, don't touch me, don't look at me. Okay. Chief, do you want to say something?
I mean, we're just very blessed, we've got some terrific firefighter paramedics and EMTs, and both Dalton King and Hugo have been tremendous additions to our organization and to our family, and we're just excited to have them here and look forward to a long, long career with them, so.
All right, I'll take your, thank you. Thanks, Chief. So Ken.
Welcome.
Mr. Herman. Counsel, this is exciting as well. We're getting an award of financial reporting achievement. I'm going to hand that to you, because I have a paper that I'm going to read from. This is easy when you can read, you know, it's the guys that have to repeat, and then I'm, yeah, that's hard. Yeah, so, this is, "Presentation of the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to the Finance Department. The Government of Finance Officers Association has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Highland Village for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2019. The report was judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. And this is the 27th year this city has been awarded this, this award." So, congratulations. We appreciate you and your team, because I know it's a team, so congratulations, all right. You want to say anything? You don't have, you mean, like, you want to give a?
I would say, I would, if you'd like to, Heather Miller is our primary person who does this, and she works tirelessly, easily said, year after year, and there's a lot of work that goes into putting the audit together and doing all this, and she should be committed.
She, absolutely, absolutely, she does a great job. Okay. Counsel, does anybody else have anything? All right. And we are going to move on to the consent agenda. All of the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from the agenda, so it may be considered separately, and/or adding any item from the action agenda, so it can be considered as part of the consent agenda items. And I would like to recommend, there's no objection that we move number 15 from action to the consent agenda. Counsel, is everybody okay with that? Okay. So number 10, consider approval of minutes, the regular city council meeting held on December 8th, 2020. Number 11, consider resolution 2021-2925, authorizing an inter-local agreement with the Goodbye Purchasing Cooperative to participate in the inter-local purchasing system purchasing cooperative. Receive budget reports for period ending October 31st, 2020. Receive budget reports for period ending November 30th, 2020. And moving number 15 to consent, consider resolution 2021-2926, establishing a designated mailing address, email addresses, and website for receipt of public information requests. So do I have a motion? Yes.
I saw move that these items be approved.
Perfect, thank you, Barbara. Do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Heslop, second. Okay, counsel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, carries 7-0. Moving on, we did not meet in closed session, so we will go on now to number 16. Consider ordinance 2021-1280, adopting a non-substantive amendments to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 26, Subdivision and Site Development Regulations, Exhibit A, subdivision ordinance relating to subsections E and F of Section 2.7, replating to correct certain scrivener errors. And this will be the first of two reads.
Mayor and Council, during the course of review of a minor replat by staff and some questions that were raised in trying to read this procedural section of the subdivision regulation, we determined that in the amendment, amending ordinance, we adopted a number of months ago with respect to these two paragraphs, that in some of my cut-and-paste drafting that I did for some ordinances from another city where we were, that I was using, I did not properly complete all the cross-referenced changes in section numbering that needed to happen to make sure that the numbering cross-references were internally complete. So we, this ordinance is to clean that up and to make sure that we've got an internally cross-referenced, complete ordinance with respect to our subdivision regulations relating to these two sections, and that's.
Perfect.
That's the basis of it being a non-substantive change. It's really just, we're not changing any of the procedures, we're just making sure that the cross-numbered sections, cross-reference section numbers are correct and internally consistent.
All right, thank you. Counsel?
Motion we approve.
Okay. Mr. Jaworski made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Feaster? Thank you, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? It carries 7-0. All right, so we moved late work session up, we have dates. Now everybody's good, we'll let everybody know what, what date is, works best for Riley as far as that part of it, and if you have anything that you would like to add to the work session workshop, if you'll send that in to Angie as soon as possible, that would be great. And if anybody, anybody else have anything? Any updates? Nothing? Perfect, well, welcome to 2021, and I'm glad that, I'm glad we're finally here in 2021, to 2020 behind us, hindsight. All right, we are adjourned at, what time is it, 7:40?